At the proper select board to order for the November 27th meeting. And would everyone please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would I get a motion to review and approve the agenda for this meeting?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Review and approve the minutes for the past November 13th meeting?
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, good news to share with the community?
Just a reminder, we do have the Christmas tree lighting this Friday at 6:00 PM in the park. And if it does rain, like they say it might, we are moving to the library because they'll... But they have a tree, right?
Yeah.
We'll sing around it and they'll come down and plug this in. We'll make do with what we can with the weather, so.
Good. Thank you. Uh, public comment? Hearing none, moving along. Discussion items? Has everyone had a chance to review and sign the bills?
Yes.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission, emergency management, reappointments. Judy?
Yes, so I got an email, um, we have to do reappointments for the upcoming year. Right now, both Kevin Blondie and I are on it. Um, I assume Kevin wants to remain on it. Uh, if there's anyone else who'd like to be on it rather than myself, let me know. Otherwise, I'll be on it.
Good, thank you.
Alright, then I'm just gonna get, um, select board approval signatures so we can do that after. If that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Municipal reappraisal? Lisa, I'll bet that's you.
That would be me. Um, I had a couple of items, uh, under that. Um, uh, I guess I'll start with, uh, I believe two out of three of these documents were in your packet. There's a letter from the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association. I don't know if you saw that. I have extra copies of that. If anyone would like a copy, I can pass around. Uh, I've been sharing this with all of my towns. Um, it's a piece of legislation that passed just this last year, um, that, uh, we as assessors and listers are quite concerned about and think our select boards should be rapidly concerned as well. Um, and it involves a, um, a reappraisal plan, specifically a detailed implementation proposal for creating a statewide system to conduct reappraisals of municipal and statewide education grand lists. Could be some good to come from that, some standards where some towns do reappraisals on a regular basis, some do not. But other language in the bill states further, "Upon completion of a reappraisal pursuant to this subsection, the property value set by the commissioner shall be binding on the municipality and the municipality's municipal and statewide education grand lists." And that's the part we're very concerned about with the state's kind of overreach. If, if this comes about as it's proposed in the legislation. What's kind of unclear is, is how it's going to unfold. Um, they've been charged, the tax department has been charged with, um, creating an implementation proposal for this. And, uh, they have a $50,000 appropriation to commission a study for how this can be done. It's a pretty complex problem for a $50,000 study. Um, I don't know whether it's disturbing or maybe just a little bit about how legislation works these days of putting the legislation out there that the state could potentially have control of our municipal and education grand lists before they've done the study to determine if this is at all remotely feasible. So, um, I want you to be aware of that. And, um, I've spent a lot of time testifying about this bill and interacting with the fallout of it as president of the Vermont Assessors and Listers Association and as an appraisal contractor. And I can tell you that PBR is at least reaching out to us assessors and listers as well as appraisal contractors, um, to try to, um, really understand what it's like with people on, who have boots on the ground with this. If, uh, if our legislators would do the same, that would be tremendously helpful. Um, but they don't. They tend to make these decisions, um, in a, in a vacuum without understanding how it, how it really works on the ground. So VLCT is equally concerned about this, uh, as is the, um, let me get their acronym right, the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association. So the three parties have written letters to both the, um, Department of Taxes Tax Commissioner and the, um, representative Emily Cornheiser of House Ways and Means, who, um, authored this bill and, um, ushered it, ushered it through, so to speak. Um, and it's basically, I have, I don't have multiple copies of the letter and I don't know if I had it available to give you, Judy?
This is the one here with regarding?
That one I gave you, but this one was just finalized, uh, Wednesday, way before Thanksgiving. So you probably don't, so there are copies of, you can take these copies if you want and distribute them. But the gist of it is that, um, the three, those three parties that have signed that agree that, you know, the study is happening and we need to be involved with it. And so we're asking for, um, first of all, stakeholder involvement to make sure that that's really meaningful and not just checking off the boxes, "Oh yeah, we talked to some listers and they didn't have a big problem with this." Um, that it's, it's really more meaningful that, um, that they look at, at how this could even work. Um, and the other part of it is to really advocate for municipalities that, um, that whatever decision is made, that, um, some control still remains with the municipality. So I don't know how y'all feel about that. If you learn a little bit more about it and have questions, feel free to, um, you know, to reach out to me and I'll, I'll tell you whatever I, I know at that given point in time. But it, um, kind of brings us to where we are with, uh, needing a townwide reappraisal fairly soon in Proctor. And honestly, there's so much uncertainty. I think some of my towns are thinking, "Well, maybe we better wait until the state figures this out." Um, on the other hand, you know, the longer you wait, um, the more kind of sticker shock you have among taxpayers with changes that have been building over a great number of years. And typically, the further you drift from equity. So even though your, your ratio, you know, you're, you're well under assessed, um, throughout Proctor, it's not equal for all taxpayers. Some properties have simply appreciated more than others. Um, some maybe have just neighborhoods have changed and, uh, you know, values have changed for certain classes of properties, uh, within that timeframe. So we are not under order yet from the state to do it. Um, but you had your last one, 2017. You know, every 10 years is pretty reasonable and to be expected. Um, so I think you should start planning for it. Um, the other kind of wrinkle that I think you should also start planning for, and I, and I think I did give you some quotes, uh, for the software conversion, is the software that we have is just, um, it was an unfortunate choice. Um, I know when Jim Boyle was here, if he was still with us, it would be fine because Jim would usher us through this. But without Jim, the, the support coming from this software is just terrible. This, this company, ProVal, has been sold three times during my tenure. It's just, uh, it's, it's kind of a white elephant that's being kicked down the road and the software, the support for the software seems to get worse with every implementation. And that said, this is becoming a real problem where Karen and I are doing double data entry because we don't trust the extracts coming out of ProVal to go to the grand list software. So it's, you know, it's a little bit 1980s to be doing double data entry. Um, and there's more at stake with that, with the, um, with the state's new grand list, uh, software. So, um, my recommendation is to plan to go to Patriot. Um, and I've been talking to an appraisal contractor that might be available sooner rather than, um, than some of the other appraisal contractors throughout the state. I could be involved. I don't think I could take it all on myself with this company. Um, but I may consult with them on an RFP and I think that would be ideal. So what we're looking at, and we're talking to Tyler Technologies, um, uh, through John Vickery and John Valente, and both of them have said they'd be happy to come to a meeting at some point and explain it to you. What I'm trying to pull off is kind of what, um, one suggestion for how the state might do this to, to get more reappraisals done quicker, and that is to have towns work together. Um, to do every 500, 700 parcel town independently is not really cost effective. It's hard to get vendors. Any vendors you're gonna get to bid on it are gonna be talking literally 2029 probably to bid on any job. And some of them are saying, "Yeah, I couldn't get to that till 2029 and I can't even give you a price now because that's so far out. I don't know what inflation's gonna be at that point." So, um, I think combining our efforts with towns makes sense. Um, and again, I don't know how you feel about that, so you may need a little time to stew on it. From, from my perspective, it would still be our grand list here in Proctor. Um, but when we look at data, if I'm doing, if I were doing the reappraisal myself in Proctor and any reputable firm that would do it would have to look at sales information way beyond Proctor. You know, when a person's buying a house, they don't always limit themselves just to Proctor. They may look through much of Rutland County, certainly West Rutland, Pittsburgh, Rutland Town, you know, the abutting towns. So I have to look at that data anyway. Um, and I'm already the assessor in a lot of these towns, so you're, you're happy to share these resources of appraisers and assessors. So if the, um, if the townwide reappraisal happened at a similar time with a similar system, I think it would benefit all of those towns in the short run and in the long run. I mean, hopefully I'll be retired if I don't lose my mind first within 10 years. So I'm starting to think about that, of who's gonna do the work when, um, you know, when I retire. Um, and there aren't that many young people coming into it. And those that are, are not willing to work with, um, very idiosyncratic systems. You know, if, if my son were doing five towns, six towns like I am, and they've all got slightly different systems, he wouldn't, uh, he wouldn't be very patient with that. And it's very hard, it's been very hard to train him in that. I'm used to working with a different software. I've got three different software packages I deal with. Um, that's, that's not, not an ideal situation for consistency and fairness, so.
So Lisa, it would be an advantage because we'd all have the same software and they'd be more apt to kind of step forward to do the appraisal knowing they can go from Proctor to West Rutland, to Pittsburgh, to Rutland Town.
Exactly, exactly. And, um, Vickery and Valente through Tyler Technologies, that's who they, they work for. Um, John Vickery was the former assessor in the town, in City Burlington. Um, and John Valente had his own reappraisal company, um, who he sold to, which he sold to Tyler Technologies. Anyway, they just got the bid for Castleton. So they're gonna be writing Castleton, um, maybe they'll get the bid in Rutland City as well. And, and that makes, there's the economies of scale as best we're, we're gonna have them. But, you know, in the long run, maintaining the grand list, if it's simple and consistent from town to town, it just makes it so much easier to staff that and to train new staff to do it. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm working in a couple of towns right now where I thought the listers understood how to maintain sketches and update properties, you know, with the annual changes that we do, but they really didn't. So, so the, the state of their data is, um, a bit in disarray. And, and if it were a, um, more modern and more consistent system, I think that would have been easier for them to maintain. Is, is my thought process along that.
Well, we value that information that you've been with us for a long time and...
Years now, yeah. Yeah, 2017, yeah, right after your reappraisal.
Yeah, and...
We'd, we'd like to discuss that a little bit.
Sure, sure.
Um, do you think writing a letter from the board to whoever would amount to anything?
As far as the, um, the Act 68 of 2023 business, absolutely. I, I think, um, any, any letters you wanna write or bring in your local representatives. Um, you know, we were, when we were working on these letters with VLCT, we wanted to get them out there before this next legislative session. Um, and among some of our assessor, you know, VALA members, there was some hope that maybe some of this law would actually be repealed or, um, significantly amended to change it. Um, we'll see, we'll see.
I can't remember the state taking over something and it got better and cheaper.
Yeah, cheaper definitely, yeah, no. I mean, here's the thing, is part of their reasoning for doing this is because we can't get appraisal firms and we can't get staff to do this work. Well, where the hell is the state gonna get them if we can't get them? It makes no sense.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, more state control is, I mean, I could, I could go on for a while, but I think it's, it's one more little chink in local control that I, I, I think it is worth.
Yeah.
It is worth resisting. And, and you know, here's the other thing, if the state were to take over control of that, there was some suggestion in the legislature that we would do away with the BCA so it would be a lister's grievance, and I'm not sure how that would work where as your assessor, I might have to defend a number that the town didn't really have any say over and I've gotta sign off on that number? When I sign the grand list, that's, that's, to me, I take that pretty seriously. I'm signing that grand list as a, a true and accurate representation of fair market value, yada, yada. Um, so anyway, to, to do away with those, um, local levels of appeal, I, I don't think is the Vermont way. If, if you don't have the option of going to your local board with a tax appeal and you have to go to the state, that's gonna be a game that only the wealthy can.
Don't you have to go to the state if you wanna appeal to the third process? You start locally.
Right.
Listers, Board of Civil Authority, but the state is the one that ultimately will make that decision. If you keep appealing.
And well, if you keep appealing, actually, there's, there's a choice so that it's a tiered system right now. You start with the lister's grievance, then Board of Civil Authority, which is your local select board of justice in the pieces. And then you have, um, a forked approach where you can either go to property valuation and review the state hearing officer, or you can go to Superior Court. Um, with PBNR being a cheaper, the state being a cheaper alternative than going to court. You don't need to hire a lawyer. But still, that's a pretty daunting process if the BCA level is not there and the lister's grievance level is not as meaningful.
Have you looked at Act 68 and have they said they're gonna eliminate the local grievance process or has it yet to be determined?
They've talked about eliminating the BCA.
Well, talked about, about it. Is it in Act 68?
It's not in the statute, no, no. It's something that's been discussed and may come out of the study. They're, they're talking about ways to streamline the process of a reappraisal. I was just in on a meeting today with appraisal contractors and one of the things they talked about was the long timeframe of appeals. If we could shorten that and change the deadlines for that. I'm kind of scratching my head and going, "No, I don't think we should do that." I think there's a reason. There's a few weeks for the taxpayer to respond. There's a week for us to respond, again, another two weeks. I, I think you have to give people time.
Sure.
Time to file an appeal if they want to and to understand what it is they're, you know, they're appealing. So I, I'm not in favor of any shortening or simplification of that, that process.
And then a single statewide reappraisal system overseen and run by the Vermont Department of Taxes. Does that mean they would pay for it?
That's the other thing.
I mean, that sounds nice if they would pay for it.
So right now, the towns get 850 a parcel per year. And that was never intended to cover the full cost of a reappraisal, but to be a contribution towards it. So this legislative committee has come up with this idea that they could take that 850, pull that away from the towns, which hasn't been put into statute yet, but it was discussed. Take that away from the towns and put this in the fund and that would be enough to do reapprai- townwide reappraisals every six years?
Oh, come on.
There's no way. Again, the state isn't gonna do something cheaper. And when they couldn't do it, I mean, the typical cost of a reappraisal is between 100 and 120 a, a parcel these days. You, you know, you can do the math on that pretty quick. You're not gonna get there at 850 a parcel in six years.
In Proctor, we put away the last two fiscal years, over $45,000 into an account. And I think in the current budget, there's another allocation of another $45,000 plus towards the reappraisal fund.
Yeah.
So as I say, if the state were to pick it up, that sounds pretty sweet.
Study on that, yeah.
Pretty nice for the power of the state.
Well, that's what a few people on the surface saw. It's, "Oh yeah, maybe the state will pay for it."
Yeah.
I, I'd be more concerned that there'll be costs that will be pushed back on the towns that you didn't have any control over.
Yeah. Have they got a timeframe for Act 68 implementation or this is just the study?
The study, yeah. This study is supposed to be due to the legislature next December, December of 2024. So they've got a year for, a lot could happen in this next year with that study and with, uh, with fleshing it out. And I, I can only hope that they'll, uh, hire a sensible bidder who will... I, I honestly don't even know who is bidding on this project and who would have, who would have the understanding of both the way things have to be done and have been done in a, a small rural state, um, as well as understanding, you know, more state-of-the-art appraising. You know, one of the things they talk about is doing everything by aerial pictometry, um, which is okay, all well and good, but wooded areas and rural areas in Vermont might be a lot harder to do than, say Burlington. Burlington was very successful using just that tool, but that's a lot more open and, um, easy to keep an eye on. You know, we can all keep an eye on who's doing what on Route 7 and, you know, right on Route 3, but once we get, once we get out on the long driveway off of Woodwell Hollow Road or off of Florence Road, all bets are off.
Yes, yeah. And then this letter from VALA talks about the, uh, shareholder, stockholder? Shareholder? Stakeholder, stakeholder. Stakeholder, now, uh, they say they, they haven't defined what makes up the stakeholders. Is there a way to kind of get that defined?
The, the VLCT letter tries to define that somewhat and say it should be listers and assessors, should be some municipal officials like yourself, should be some clerks and treasurers. Um, it's gonna impact all of those, those parties.
Will they have public meetings, you know, to, to establish that or that's gonna be just in some office?
That's a, that's a good, good question. I don't know. Some of what came out of this was, um, racial discrimination in appraisals, which, okay, that's, that's a bad thing. We shouldn't have that going on. I'm not sure how big of a problem it is in Vermont and how sending us to bias training is gonna impact that. Um, but it is a national problem that's been documented and so that's part of who they consider a stakeholder.
Yeah. And in VALA's letter, they also use that word "control" an awful lot. Does the state wanna control it or the state just wants accurate, up-to-date appraisals that they can use? Like they use with, you know, the educational tax?
That's what is, is yet to be defined. When I, when I first read the, the bill as enacted, I'm like, "I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means." And I'm circling and making big question marks in the margins on just about every paragraph. You know, one of them, they said is that, one of the, the points of this bill is that, um, assessors and listers have to get training. An elected lister has to have training within one year. But it didn't specify what that training was and how much you had to get within one year. I mean, you can't, you can't learn to be a qualified assessor or lister in one year. There's no way. But some, some minimum of, of making your way to, um, to that certification. We already have a voluntary certification process in Vermont. Um, and we have a lot of our Vermont listers and assessors who are on that list. We have it on the VALA website, but it's completely voluntary. In other states, it is required. You, there's a certified tax assessor, um, certification in New Hampshire. I think Massachusetts has one too. A lot of the states around us do. And I don't, I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but you gotta phase it in and give people time to come up to speed with that, I think.
Yeah.
And you probably gotta have tiers for that training too. I mean, the model that I have for my towns, I think, has worked and been more affordable is you don't need, not all of the work that a town does on an ongoing basis requires an assessor with, with top qualification. Some of it is more clerical. They have to understand, you know, how to read a deed before they can enter property transfers, but they don't have to have a, uh, a full appraisal background to do some of that stuff. So I think that it may come out of it that there will be tiers of, of training and expertise, which that could work well. Then you'd have job descriptions, say, to put out there for an assessor clerk or, um, or your, your full assessor.
Lisa, um, thank you for coming over tonight. Appreciate it very much. Uh, would you, we don't have a full board tonight. We'd like to talk about that with a full board, but...
Absolutely.
Would you mind emailing Judy, uh, just a, where that should be sent to if, if we decide to do a letter?
Absolutely. Yeah, Pittsburgh's right on it and we'll see what they've done. They may be talking to their local reps as well as sending something to property valuation or new tax department.
They mentioned it to Butch there a while ago, and actually, he mentioned it first and he's not crazy about the ideas.
Oh, oh, I'll tell you, the, the Rutland County reps and senators were almost uniformly opposed to this and had raised some really good questions. The rest of the state, not so much.
Yeah, we're pretty lucky that we've got the representation locally here.
I think they were pretty, um, pretty, pretty solid on local control, uh, with our Rutland County reps and senators. So I was happy to see that.
Yeah, yes.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, if you hear any updates, if you keep us in mind, if you have any updates that you hear of.
Oh, I, I will be and as I'm talking about the reappraisal and all of that, maybe get you a sample RFP to, so start thinking about that. I don't know if I gave Judy this or not, but we'll make sure you have that too.
Well, thank you so much.
Alright, thanks. Have a great night.
Yep. Lisa, again, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Uh, our road commissioner, highway commissioner's here tonight, so we're gonna jump him up on the list a little bit and check his budget, but just before we do that, John, you missed open public comments. We're glad to give you a couple of minutes if you'd like to talk.
I'd love to know what you guys have to say.
Sure, that's fine, yep.
Then I'll do my comments. Thank you.
So it's Department 40 in the budget. We're just gonna do, jump to the budget, Department 40, so that I don't have to sit here. The meeting, which probably won't be too long, but for stickles.
He'd just be home watching reruns or something. Thank you for coming up tonight. We appreciate it. And you guys did the Jalen Rhodes, I thought, you know, what heavy, nasty snow. We certainly, the weather guy I watched didn't predict that.
No, that was a surprise.
I know. It was pouring and all of a sudden I hear the plows go by and I was just like, wow.
I know. It was pouring, and then all of a sudden, I hear the plows go by, and I was just like, wow.
Department forty, highway.
So, again, some of these numbers haven't come in yet from the league that we calculate off of, but some of the others, we've kind of calculated. And like I said before, a lot of the, um, differences in, um, either labor cost, overtime cost, FICA, all that is because of the split of putting part, of putting less into water and wastewater and focusing on those employees that are in that division and part of Kyle's salary as well in mind. And then focusing on the other ones being totally highway. So, that's where the variance could come from last year to this year.
Anybody got any questions on the numbers? One thing I would like to talk about is, uh, down towards the bottom, highway equipment fund. Twenty thousand dollars. Now, we lose that every year if we don't use it.
No, I believe it's in a reserve fund, so it's going to accumulate.
Good.
But I, I did bump it up.
Yes, I see that. Well, twenty grand doesn't even buy a good used pickup today.
No, but putting forty thousand isn't better than putting twenty thousand in a year.
It was way better, yes. I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
I know.
You know, we've got stuff that's getting older.
Right.
A loader and a dump truck, and then we need some additional stuff. Good. I, I don't have an issue with that. Anybody else? Judy, what else?
A lot of things have, that one's the, the big jump.
Yeah.
Um, the decrease in the health insurance, again, is because, um, the split between water, wastewater and highway. So, and, and it's hard, because like, right now, if you calculate it off of what we currently have, there's only three of them on health insurance, so.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So.
And on page two there, highway continues. I assume one, two, three down, highway improvements. Is that paving?
Yes.
Okay, boy, you know, we, that's going to come around to bite us. Uh, you know, ten grand, uh, more is
It's nothing.
It is nothing, no, not in today's.
And I hope, I'm hoping, we haven't gotten, um, states funding yet that they give us every year. That comes later.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping it's definitely at least equal to what we've had, but it'd be great, you know?
Yes, the class two is, we're done with that for a few years.
Uh, yeah.
Usually the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know what the urgent need is for paving?
Um, there's a lot of need for paving. Um, my people call every day about different streets. We do have certain streets next year that we already have that the Public Works has to do, that they already, you know, are looking at. Um, like we said, the extension from where North Street wasn't finished, um, all the way to the five ways and then down to Pleasant and then down up Florence.
The ninety-five thousand, is that sufficient at the current market prices to complete those projects?
No, that was no.
We have to rely on grant funding to backfill it.
And we won't know about the grant money until the year that we're doing it?
At the very end of the year, maybe beginning of January.
Yeah.
And generally, that's, I mean.
That's won't even match what we're, what we put away.
No, no. No.
Is there a way, then, we could come up with the current need for the next year's projects?
Well, what's budgeted already is for next year's projects. I'm budgeting out for two years out.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah. I mean, it would be great, you know, like I said, the state keeps coming back and back to me with, you know, we've got so much money in flooding. Isn't there someplace you flooded? You know, and they keep asking me and asking me. It's like, no, we don't. And they have all this excess money. And it would be just so nice if they just put it into a fund for municipalities that where, where's the need? If it's not, if you aren't flooded, but you have a need because of costs and everything, you know, to get those extra dollars that way.
Yeah, and you're not going to get them.
Yeah, they're just so, you know, but we, you know, definitely looking for other alternatives, you know?
Question, Tom.
Yes.
You get money from the state on, on the road going through problems, just like sixty-three or sixty-seven thousand dollars. Where does that money go? That just goes on the highway, or should you put that in the paving?
I'm not sure, John, where'd that go?
But I'm just saying, you get that state money right through here on this road, and I'd like to know where it goes. I mean, she doesn't know where it goes. I, I don't, I don't want to listen, I don't want to hurt her feelings.
John, I mean, if you ask her where it went, I could tell you where it goes.
You get the state money. I'd just like to know if you can take that and use that for the paving money.
Okay. Judy, do you know where that money goes?
Yes, I do. And it goes to paving.
Okay.
And that's what we used last year for West Street. That's to help supplement the cost of West Street being paved.
Two grand.
Yeah, that's exactly where it goes, first paving.
Okay, yeah. Paving, John.
Because I know there was eighty thousand dollars in the budget for paving too.
Yeah, but
Yes.
today's, you know, will that do a mile? Eighty thousand dollars? I'll bet it won't.
It will.
Well, maybe just an overcoat, but if you're going to grind it and straighten it out and repave it, you know?
Yeah, just look what
Which is what we've been trying to do.
What's Proctor Road did to us?
That was over, that was overkill.
Uh, no, no, you said we, we didn't do enough out there. You hounded us for not replacing all the culverts, doing all this extra work. So, we didn't work out.
Stuff you do overkill, which you don't have to do it on the paving.
Well, you told us, you told us we're stupid because we weren't doing it.
On the, on the potholes, yes.
You don't know the culverts you mentioned and, and the covert headers and everything. Should have been all redone.
Yeah, well, it's, uh.
Kyle, you've had a chance to look at these numbers. If anything you're not happy with, you'd like to?
Nope, the, the major concern was the equipment fund.
Yes.
We have a lot of age, you know, over equipment. We have a loader now that's twenty years old and
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Twenty, you know, like you were saying, with, you know, twenty grand won't buy a used pickup truck nowadays.
Correct, yeah.
Your average loader's way up there. It'll take years at twenty grand to be able to replace that. And with the age of that, we don't have years to replace that. It's an essential piece of equipment. Just as an example. That was my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Everything else is.
We bumped up the tree removal too, because that seems to be a more, a greater occurrence lately with peop- with trees coming down.
Yeah.
It's, that cost has really gotten up.
Yes, yes. All right, anything else? If the highway budget is
Do I do the highway building too?
Yes.
If you want to, sure.
That's pretty much stable with, you know, cost. Again, but we talked about in previous meetings about the heat, trying to find alternatives or, you know, better way to make that more feasible.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but hopefully we'll get to see that audit, because that could answer a lot of questions for us.
Oh, the assessment?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, definitely. But who knows what happens?
Now, the garage building fund, is that a, uh, do we lose that money, or is that in a sinking fund?
That, I, that's also a loser fund.
Yeah.
All it wants to accumulate.
Good. Excellent. Okay. Everybody happy?
Well, I think some of these things are, are kind of low, but
Well, we can run over them again afterwards. We're just quickly.
We got the full board here.
Hey, I'd love to see it bumped up.
Yeah.
I'd rather you guys bump it up than me.
We're all going to
Judy said. All right.
Because the backhoe is not that, how old is that car?
You bought that when Lopie was in charge. Who was it who ran the war? You bought that backhoe. And I'll tell you something right now, Bruce. I looked at that backhoe the other day. I'm ashamed. The hose holes, this picture. Okay, I'm in the construction business, and Tom, you know that. I'm in the construction, and this equipment, loaders, backhoes are not cheap.
We know that, yes.
God has maintained them twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I, you know, they're constantly dealing with salt and, you know, snow and
Yes.
wet ditches and, and how old's the backhoe? Thirty years?
No. Um, the backhoe, the backhoe's not as, that'll, not as old as the loader.
Okay, yeah. But it's certainly twenty years old.
No, 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 maybe seven, eight.
I don't say seven or eight years old.
Nine, maybe.
You don't have any knowledge of them.
But, uh, I mean, you can maintain equipment all you want, wash it, maintain it. And just any piece of equipment, just general use, it's just going to wear out over time.
Yeah.
Mention municipal use. We, we definitely use them to their first potential. We give, we put it through, think, you know, like salt, things like that.
Sure.
Wash them all day, every day. It's still going to deteriorate over time. And I believe, I don't know if it still says in the policy, but at one point, it mentioned replacing equipment every five years.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that's, that would be a good direction to go in, maybe not five years, but, you know, replacing them more often because you'd be able to hold a resale value. Sorry, to the point where you're going to dump a bunch of money into it.
We would like to see us get back on, uh, you know, a timeframe for each piece of equipment.
Definitely.
You know?
Yeah, be more feasible.
Yeah, that's the way it used to be, and we wouldn't like to work back towards that.
Yeah, we, we've got to, we've cut there an awful lot over the years. We've got to be more realistic. Stuff isn't getting cheaper.
No, and we've lost, you know, not much local anymore, which is too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, question to the board. Is it feasible to have a highway department?
Yes.
If it gets, this is expensive.
It certainly is, John.
It's going to be expensive if you hire somebody.
Contractors are in business to make money. You know that, John.
So, you probably can get bids on long as this town for seventy-five to eight thousand a year.
Oh.
That's pretty cheap.
Are, are they going to do the little things that these guys do? Go back out and touch up, come in and plow the parking lot here?
Yeah, sure.
I do it. I do it. I do snow. I think, you know that. I did, I've been doing the telephone company for years.
Yes, I know that for a fact.
Yes.
Yes.
How many communities do that? How many communities contract out their highway department in the state of Vermont?
Rutland Town does all their contract.
Uh, well, they have a, they have a three-man and they do their, they plow the stations. They do.
They have a public
They were, they were doing, they were on the sidewalk project.
Um, public does this, and McCurry does the other end, I think.
Yeah, that's one portion of it. You said the whole thing. I said, who hired contracts out the entire highway department? So, apparently, there's no one, because doing snow removal is one piece. And I know Rutland Town has a DPW department, so it's not, if it was feasible, other communities would be doing it. And you've come with nothing to say that any community is doing it.
Right, so.
If you're all set, Kyle, uh, thank you. We're glad that we stick around, but, you know.
We may have some more questions or
Call me, right?
If there's any other questions or concerns?
I'd say thank you in your report about putting your details in there about how you do take care of the equipment and service the equipment. It's nice to read that.
Yeah, the, the small things you do that, you know, wouldn't be covered under a contract with a contractor, you know?
Yeah, I try to give you guys as many details as possible.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
They got the Christmas tree for us.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, they do wellness checks. Uh, that's amazing, you know, it's a small town, you know?
Yeah. Thanks for all that you and the crew do.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yep, have a good night.
You too.
Take care, thank you.
Judy, the board asked the planning commission to look into
Yeah, I just put that in so you knew it. So, I did email them to look at the short-term rentals.
Their chairman said, okay?
Yeah.
Great.
And our next meeting should be next Thursday.
Sheriff's Office provided definitions for their acronyms. Everybody look at those?
Yes, yes.
Okay, commit them to memory.
Some I would never guess. It's like, whoa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Judy, change of authorized representative for water infrastructure loan?
Yes, so we have a loan for the water infrastructure for, um, the asset management plan. And I'm the authorized representative, but because I never got approval from the, the board at the time of my transition, the board needs to approve it. So, it's the chair, so I don't know if you can sign as vice, you know, but it's for that one, so.
Okay.
It's just when documents come through, I can like either e-sign or just send them back to you.
And I'll send it down?
At the board, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, I don't know if I missed it, but there was a thing in their regional planning commission representatives, uh, reappointment.
Right, that's for, um, Kevin Blondie and myself.
Okay, for Eon's emergency management, okay.
Yeah. And I need that one signed, um, tonight, because they want it by the thirtieth, so it, the one for the emergency management.
Okay. Everybody?
Did you pass that on to them? Oh, no, isn't, did you, you just flipped it up, I thought.
Okay, well, this was in my packet.
Right, it's underneath it, there. That needs to be signed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just print here, select board approval.
Yep. And then I'll just have Kevin and myself on there.
Good, thank you. Auditor's report. It appears we passed.
We did. And I think a lot of the things is what they seem to come up with every year is, um, a lot of the discrepancies are things that, being a small town and a small office, it's hard to have those checks and balances because you have two people doing everything. You know, you don't have like another third party to
I read it on the back. Yeah, it's the same, basically.
Then
We have to pass. I'm happy.
Yep, no, I think, uh, it's a, a good report and a lot to Now, the stale checks, that was something, be something that somebody will look into?
Huh?
The stale checks. They were talking in here about the stale checks.
Yeah, yeah, because Celia went over it with him, you know, all of it and stuff, and they talked about things and how they could try to rectify when there are processes that are, you know, like if Celia's doing one financial piece of it, she shouldn't be doing another. How do we rectify that when we only have, you know, one other person and one, somebody, nobody who can actually do it, you know?
No, the outstanding checks, the ones that haven't been cashed.
Yeah, so Celia went over those with them.
Yeah.
And they did comment that there were things that weren't completed and
Right.
They were going back into it after the first of the year.
And we've had a couple instances this year where we've paid bills and like six months, eight months later, someone's come back and said, you know, we didn't pay it. And we said, yeah, we did. We have the check, but they never cashed it, so then we have to reissue checks, so.
So, yeah, those. So, I think it's, uh, you know, for a small, two-person office, in the sense, uh, I think we're, we're holding our own quite well. But why don't we have an accounting and procedures manual? Wouldn't that be nice to have in case?
I, that would be something that the clerk and treasurer would have to, I mean, I know they have guidelines, I don't, you know?
Yeah. Vermont Leave of Cities and Towns, they, they wouldn't be able to help us out with, you know, developing a manual?
Yeah, they could give you a template, you know, something that they've used.
Yeah. Because if there's ever a transition, and there's always transitions, you know, it would be nice to have, you know, that type of document.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. That's going to be an issue one of these years.
Yeah.
Uh, because I don't see, you know, when Uh, cause I don't see, you know, when Celia decides to retire, I.
Right.
I would assume Mary would be right behind her, so that will be a little bit difficult.
I'll make a note of it, though, for her.
Good. Like to adjourn the select board meeting and adjourn the board of water commissioners.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Asset management plan reimbursement.
So I just put that on there, cause that's, they've done the final phase of the asset management plan, so now I have to submit the paperwork so that they'll fully reimburse us for the grant that they gave us for that.
Thank you. Vermont League of Cities and Towns visiting eleven twenty-eight to view dams.
Yes, so tomorrow they're coming down to look at the three dams, um, based on the state's report that, um, was seen. So there's question as far as them being in poor condition and what that means as far as being on our property schedule. Um, they've always seemed to say that they're in poor condition, but none of them are really like a liability, other than possibly the pool, you know, in certain areas. So the, um, risk management, um, advisor from the league is coming down tomorrow and going to visit all three dams to make his report, to see that, you know, if they can be altered.
Yeah, that's a kind of a standard thing that they do, so.
And what happens if you can't, um, carry them on your insurance? Your dams?
Well, I would think we'd have to get back to the state to see what it is that, you know, why they think they're in poor condition and what needs to be remedied to put them in, you know, so that they're in good condition and then the league says, okay, good, will satisfy us, and put them back on the property schedule. What's funny is that this was, this was, this was done like, what, three years ago, I think?
Right.
Going on three years, and we've been on the property schedule, and all of a sudden this year they decided to take it off. So, um, I don't know, I asked them why, you know, why all of a sudden you're taking it off the property schedule when they've been on there with the same status for those years? And they said they always, you know, kind of talk about, you know, the liability and where they're at, the conditions and stuff, they're not up to par, but they've never kind of, the state has never said, well, you need to do this. You know, like when the league comes down and checks something out, they'll write a report and say, we recommend this or we require this. So the state doesn't, so whether or not he finds that it's structurally okay, then the league would put it back on to the property schedule.
Okay.
But they aren't insured right now?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, oh, wait, wait, so the certificate of insurance that has been issued for them is null and void? Because the certificate of insurance comes January one. I know this because I'm a holder of your certificate of insurance for the upper reservoir. So that insurance certificate has no viability?
No, we have a certificate of insurance that covers everything in the town.
Right.
It's one blanket. It's not specific to the dams, it's not specific to, um, the parks, it's not specific to the pool.
Actually, when that one comes, it says upper reservoir on it.
Really? I have, I got a, one certificate of insurance that I've always dealt with, with the league. Even with the city, they've always just given us one certificate of insurance, if we're thinking about the same thing.
I know what it, it's a certificate of insurance that I receive every January.
Right.
For, for that, because it's on library land.
Okay.
So I am a holder, I have that certificate because you have property within our property.
Okay, so that's why you get it specific to that. We don't, we get it as a blanket for all the properties.
So my question is, is that, that certificate of insurance is not valid?
They'll still cut, it's kind of a blanket thing, so they cover all the property together? I don't, I'd have to see how, how they even break that out, like the beaver pond, the pool, the reservoir, how much of that portion is considered and factored into that coverage? But right now, if we were to ask for the property schedule, if something happened, that wouldn't be listed on the property schedule.
So if something happened there, that property's not covered? That's my question.
Correct.
Well, we'll see what the, what their report is and then we can act and.
I mean, I know we've had issues with the reservoir, beavers in the past, you know, damming it up and stuff.
That's been on there for.
Yeah.
Years, so let's see what they're new.
Right, and that would be, to me, the biggest concern because that's, the pool, you know, is drained. Um, so that's not a big issue right now, you know, so if we had time to do something there, beaver pond has always been a low liability risk. So the reservoir would be the one that's. But all, you all know what he said.
That would probably be the easiest, cheapest one to breach.
Which one, the?
Upper reservoir on the, on the library land or near it.
That was still an expensive project way back.
Well, anytime you get near a dam, it's expensive.
Oh, yeah, 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 so. See what the report says and.
Any, anything else for the, uh, board of water commissioners? Judy, when that report comes back, would you make sure we, uh?
Yep, I know it.
See that?
Yep. And I'll ask him tomorrow too, I'll talk to him, just to get a feel of what, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, can we move from the board of water commissioners into the board of sewer commissioners?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, pretty quiet, board of sewer commissioners.
Yeah.
We are working on replacing our liners down there, John.
But we haven't got a cost estimate.
No.
And I'm waiting to hear back from the planning commission on that, um, grant that we.
Anything else for sewer commissioners?
No.
Can we move from the board of sewer commissioners back into the regular select board meeting?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, department reports, did we look at the sheriff's report? Any questions, comments?
I did receive an email that I was gonna mention in my manager's report, but I'll mention it along with his report. He did get back to me after, um, saying that there was a couple things he failed to mention when he was here. Um, he said that all evidence that's logged in, um, after it is turned in at our office is handled by my evidence officers and they don't bill the town for that, any of that time. And then also discovery from cases that are going to the state's attorney's office is not billed to the town, such as making video copies for the state, the defense, evidence logs, evidence photos, phone records, cruiser, body camera copies and officer affidavits. That's covered under the sheriff's department. So he wanted me to let you know that.
Any other questions on the sheriff's report?
Is that up to date now?
Do you report?
Sheriff's report.
What do you mean?
Uh, let's see, the last.
Just run it up to last Tuesday, cause I did the meeting, was, the packet was ready Wednesday.
Okay.
You can only run it up until the date the packet has to be out. I can't extend it beyond the dates I haven't come yet.
Right, eleven twenty-one.
So next meeting will be from twenty-second through.
Right.
That Thursday before.
Before you adjourn, Tom?
Yes.
I would like to go into executive session with the three board members only, because this is a legal thing and I'd like to discuss it. My attorney said I should discuss it to the lecture officials.
I don't believe we can do that.
I, I don't know if a citizen can request an executive session. I've never heard of that.
It'd be done ahead of time.
I've never heard of that.
It's not on the agenda either.
No, right. You, if you want to get it on the next meeting's agenda?
Well, I.
If.
I could, I got hit.
You got hit?
I shouldn't say too much more.
You mean with an attorney's bill or?
No. At the house in Chuck.
At where?
At the house in Chuck. You know what's going on with this drug stuff.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I wanted the Thompson's three board members to know any of it.
Well, I mean, there, did you call the police?
Yeah.
Did they come over and talk to you?
That's why I want to talk to you.
Okay. Well.
I would've checked the select board, not the town manager.
We can't do it tonight.
Why don't you, uh, call Judy and get it on the next agenda?
We'll have to have a formal request, I think.
Yeah. Um, I've never heard of a citizen requesting, uh.
I think you can do it.
Well.
Cause the public should not know this.
Well, uh, the open meeting laws are very strict, John. We, we can't even go to coffee together here.
I know, but I'm just saying. I'd like to see the sheriff's report.
Um, we'd be, here, take my copy. Yeah, anytime. Um, yes, if you want it on the next agenda, please, you know, let Judy know. Judy, would you just check the VLCT of?
Yeah, I don't.
Or somebody, never heard of that, so.
No.
I'm, okay, moving on. Public Works Foreman.
Like Albert said, uh, you know, this, uh, report is very detailed and, uh, so. I haven't seen anything there that jumps out as a, a concern. I don't, did you see anything, Albert?
No, no, no.
I, I just had one question there, Monday, ten sixteen. Kyle met with Tommy Grace about a dig on Park Street. What are they digging on Park Street?
Oh, the one, where they had the, uh, sinkhole there, partway up, before Warren McCullough.
Oh, okay, yep, yep.
I believe that's.
I remember hearing about that.
Tommy Grace dug on Ojulah's house, the driveway.
The service, I believe.
The service line there. And I don't know if that's the one that, uh, he may be referring to or.
Good grief.
Yeah, cause it had to be something that they got Tommy Grace to do, not the town.
Yeah, he was there doing that.
Right.
Okay, good. Any other questions on the Public Works Foreman's report? Town manager report.
Um, just, uh, just kind of going through the departments, the highway, they cleaned up a tree on North Street that fell across the road on November nineteenth. It went all the way across the road, so they went and cleaned that up on the road and across the sidewalk, so. Um, this tree's still lying there in the property. Picked up the tree for our yard for the lighting on twelve-one, set it up, um, did light, snow, rain cleanup on eleven twenty-two, twenty-seven. Water wastewater, the asset management plan's completed and I'm submitting a letter for reimbursement of the funds. Meeting with Aldridge and Elliott on eleven twenty-nine to discuss wastewater treatment plant upgrades and funding. It will be a costly project. So he called me the other day and said that the lagoons alone, um, will be at least a couple thousand to do, and he said the sludge removal alone will be at least a million. So he said it's definitely something we've gotten considering how funded, going to fund that and stuff, so.
Yeah.
So he's coming down here Wednesday morning.
Did you hear that, John? Over a million dollars just to remove the sludge when we do the liners.
There was, oh, do you have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Um, there was a water repair request on Deer Lane. Um, this was a property that, um, a couple of years, one year back, one and a half years back, was asked to be taken off the water because they had a well.
Yeah.
And now they've come back and said that the pipe is broken and they'd like it repaired. So the, I've talked with the Public Works, uh, both at the time and now, and the, the water was shut off at one point. For some reason, it was somehow turned on. There was a breakage in the line, the line is on the property, it's not on our property. Um, so I believe the intent is that they want to sell the home and feel that if someone wants to move in and have water, that they need running water. Um, I said to them that we, this, I don't know if you remember this, but this is when we forgave the, um, the water rent bill.
Yeah, there was a big.
And so we shut the water off because they had a well and that's what they were using, um, so now they want it turned back on so if the property's sold, the people can have town water.
That's not even a property.
Where is Deer Lane?
Where the dump is.
Where the dump? There's a property, a residential? Oh, okay, on the end, okay, yes.
So I just wanted to raise it with you, if it becomes more of an issue, I can put it on the agenda for further discussion.
Would you for the next meeting when the full board is here, that's, uh, you know, they gave us a hard time, uh, the farmer and.
Yes.
Everything else down there, but the, uh, you know, we tried to talk them into keeping town water.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let's see, in form, I already put this on there about, um, short-term rentals, so that was on the agenda. Um, I've been working on the budget this week, um, I had a visit from the owner of twenty-six fifty-one West Street property, uh, the fire cleanup. She was working on getting a licensed inspector for creating an asbestos report because the one that was done years ago is no longer in existence or nobody can find it. Um, after she left, it was funny, I got an email that afternoon from the state saying that they had sent her the second, um, violation, notice of violation. So they had sent the previous letter and then this was the second one for a violation and it was regarding, um, VRAC nine and nine point one, which is a notice of violation, Vermont Regulations for Asbestos Control. So they sent an email and we're gonna try to find a physical address and send it to them, so I believe if they don't follow through, um, then they're gonna take legal action possibly, so. And I think at that point, at that step, they'll be getting in touch with the select board, cause they had talked about that originally.
Sure.
About next steps. So, um, I told them that, I, when I met with her, I said, nothing can be done with the property. Um, they said they had a lot going on. I said, the first thing you need to do is get an inspector over there, you have a whole list. They have to do a report, nothing can be done until that report is written and in the hands of the state. And I said, you're not to take or touch anything on the property, so.
Yeah. Well, maybe that's, so get them to get going on it.
But, yeah, I don't see that happening. This, the saga continues, you know.
Right.
They, they just.
Yeah, it's gotten worse over there, it looks.
Yeah.
Um, attended the Chittenden Reservoir Emergency Action Plan meeting. They're working on creating a new map that will include Proctor and West Rutland, um, which I think won't be done until next year, so by the time they add us and everything, excuse me. And then, um, they did a full siren test on the fourteenth of November and they had a public, um, controlled release warning as well. So if you were on the access to it, your phone would go off and it was a warning. Let's go and grab a cough drop.
That must have scared a few people that weren't aware of.
Well, they were kind of all warned about it.
Yeah, you knew what was happening.
Well, there's always one or two.
Well, you had to return a thing when they sent it to you, that you received the, um.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
It was like jumping through hoops to return it to them, it's like. But I got through email, text and a phone call.
Yeah.
So, but it works, they're at least on top of it, so.
Yeah.
Um, I contacted the sheriff's office to ask about parked cars on sidewalks and overnight parking. I posted online that the winter parking ban is in effect and that they're not supposed to even park on sidewalks anyway. So I have noticed after that that some of the cars I've saw were not there anymore, so. I'm hoping he addressed it.
Well, uh, you know, the, uh, property place needs to, uh.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, along this, up on the street, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I did notice today that the plow had gone by and there was a patch that had snow, so I'm thinking there had to be a car parked there, so. Um, sent in the contract for the printing for the annual report. And, sorry, I apologize. Um, and then the tap work plan is at Rutland Regional Planning Commission this Wednesday. And we are booked next year for Rutland County Solid Waste, May fourth and October fifth for dump day.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, that's, uh, good to get booked ahead. Yes. All right. All set, Judy?
I think so.
Um, all right. Let's, uh, let's do the budget.
Oh, we're going to cover this on Thursday. Seems we don't have a full board here.
Well, I was hoping to at least go over it quickly.
Yeah.
Um.
And I gave all of it to you, but I didn't, if you didn't have to go through it all, but I thought at least highway and, um, fire.
Well, yeah, uh, fire was great, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, well, let's start right on page one here, transfer station.
Okay.
Can certainly understand that. Um. Curbside pickup, that's, those are big increases, but I don't think we have much control over that.
Tom, on the curbside, are you, are you paying fuel charge, extra fuel charge?
We were, we're not, this, not, we're not now.
No, we are now.
Um, okay, I'm thinking of the sheriff. Okay, yes, we are paying, uh, fuel surcharge, yes, John.
Yeah.
What if they use?
Is that in the contract?
Yeah.
Yes.
It is in the sheriff's contract, too.
Okay, that, I wouldn't know anything of that.
Okay.
Extra food.
Who's going to pick up our garbage, John?
No, extra.
Extra? Extra what?
On the fuel.
At, at the time, we didn't have a surcharge and when we took out the contract, it's a ten-year contract. So after COVID and everything came, then the surcharge was there, it was built into the contract. Time it was accepted because there was no charge and all of a sudden it became a charge.
Yes.
And then, you know, diesel fuel, when it was crazy there for a while.
I know it did. I mean, I'm just asking the question. And I don't know why that was in the contract, if it was in the contract.
Yes.
Any contractor today worth his salt would have that item in there.
Yes.
You know, the sheriff has it, his.
Yep. Nothing's free anymore.
No, not the way fuel prices fluctuate. Um, okay, curbside. Um, I, I'm glad Rutland County is coming because recycling is getting very expensive, um. So I don't know what they're recycling.
For our information, do they have tonnage reports?
Yes.
Yes.
I would just like to see what the comparison is between curbside garbage pickup tonnage wise and.
Garbage is a lot more. Garbage is a lot more, I think.
Oh, yes.
I would think it would be, but looking at, you know, the cost, you know, that curbside is, recycling is almost half of what the garbage is.
Garbage is much heavier than.
Yes, and I, yeah, right.
Plus it's every week.
And I just wanted to be able to look at those two numbers.
Yeah, on the bill that the, on the bill invoices send us, they break it down.
Is there a year total that I could look at to see, you know, what?
I don't think they give that to us. I mean, we could add them up for the year. We could, you know.
Can I look at those invoices sometime and add them up? Can I look at those invoices sometime and add them up?
I think one of the biggest problems here in town is that people abuse it because it's free. Um, and that they overload. I mean, if you go buy half these houses, their garbage bins are overflowing and they don't come down and get a bag. And Cassell still picks it up, but they're not supposed to.
Yes.
And I've reached out to them and they said, oh, no, we don't, we don't. And I'm like, I drive home that night and like, yeah, you do.
The, the, the house on South Street, you know, it's.
Every week.
Yeah, it's, it's all out there now.
Albert, you, what you should do, I would, is go with one of these guys when they do Wednesday and you'll see what's going on.
I see it right on my street.
Okay, there you go.
Yes.
You know, that's why I just wanted to be able to look at tonnage that they pick up in the town and the state keeps numbers about, you know, average family tonnage and just see how much out of line we are. But I need to see those tonnage figures.
Okay, highway, we've looked at quickly. Any questions? Highway building. Uh, we, well, it was a few years ago, Bruce, we did some repair work on a roof down there and insulation.
Yeah.
Garage.
Yeah, but that's on that, uh, audit, isn't it? The, uh, the town garage?
The cost?
I would hope, yeah, it's a town building, so they should check it when they get here, yeah. It's an older building, but it's kind of a handy location in the middle of everything, so. Um, multi-path.
That's how long it exists, so.
Okay, well, are we going to change this over to the tri-town path?
Um, well, Celia's trying to figuring how to set that up because there was never an account set up for that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And I mean, we're involved. There should be.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You know, I don't see why we can't just, because this no longer exists.
Right, but it'll always be linked to that, so she'll have to create a new account number, possibly.
All right. Um. You know, before final budget, we'd like to see. Well, there needs to be a little bit of money in there.
In the, the Beaver Pond one?
No.
Oh, the other one?
The tri-town path. No, Beaver Pond's done as far as I'm concerned.
Right, right. Yeah, there's going to be a little, it's going to be matched. We're trying to figure out how to do that because the match comes from West Rutland and Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
So we're like, do we allocate for it all? Then, you know, to have a fund so that once we pay it out, then it just gets filtered back into it and stuff, so that's what she's trying to.
Yeah, but then by twenty-five, we need to, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Good. Uh, South Street. When will the project be going out to bid?
Um, they just emailed me today and they're working on, um, applying for another grant to help subsidize some of the funding in case the project costs go up. So it should be starting in spring. I also reached out to Trees Inc. and asked them when those trees are coming down on South Street.
Yeah.
So they haven't gotten back to me yet. I've emailed them twice.
Would you email them and ask them when they plan on putting this out to bid?
Yeah.
This is the ideal time.
Right, I think, yeah, yeah.
You know, for spring work, summer work. Especially with how busy the contractors are.
What a South Street CIP.
Huh?
What a South Street CIP.
It's a project, the South Side, uh, South Street Sidewalk Project.
You'll appreciate this, Albert.
Oh, if you get rid of that marble, I'll love it.
No, no, the marble.
Not even marble.
That's a whole other thing, but, uh, because it's historic. And certain people like it.
That's the ones that don't like it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, anyway.
That's pretty growth to.
From the church up to.
Grove.
Grove is going to be replaced with concrete standard five-foot sidewalk. And then we're going to work on, hopefully.
There is a phase two.
Right.
That goes from the church to the bridge.
Right. That'll take, that'll be a little more complicated, but.
But I had a lot of people complain to me about that and why we didn't do that instead of the first phase because it's much worse because of the marble, that people can't walk on it, you can't do, you know.
Yeah. We chose the easier of two evils. Fire department looks great.
I know.
I was just, maybe it's my math, but how can the two totals be different when every item is identical as last year? Just a question. Department forty-six.
You're right.
Policing.
So I haven't gotten anything from them yet other than it was going to go, the, the total was going up ten percent.
Okay. Um.
And that's for the same number of hours, Judy, forty hours is what, what that's for?
Yeah.
And that's almost an eighteen thousand dollar change. Okay, streetlights, department fifty-two. Jumping electrical cost. Certainly understandable. Any questions? Department seventy-one, swimming pool. Uh, the change is a little less than five hundred dollars. That's amazing.
I went over last year's budget and the actuals and they're much lower than what was budgeted, you know, so. I'm hoping.
Good.
And that was actually, I think I actually calculated like the, um, bumping up these, the wages just to hold on to people more because it's harder to get lifeguards. Um, you know, and kind of expanding more the person who's in charge, getting more than the lifeguards themselves. Uh, but giving them a bigger increase so that, especially if they return because they're already trained and stuff like that, so.
Look like they had lifeguards coming back.
Yes, I think, what was it, couple?
Maybe three.
Only, yeah. And, and the.
Yeah.
Hopefully, things comes.
And the hours of operation will be the same. They don't produce last year because of staffing. Now, will it be at the same level as it was last year?
Well, I mean, it could increase, I would hope. I mean, this, like again.
This budget is built on last year's hours, right?
Well, it was based on, yeah, the actuals of this year, the actuals of this year. But it would be nice to have it open more.
More, but it's not built into the budget.
Right. And that's even, I mean, it's not even that the fact that you can't open, it's just, it's so hard to get people who want to be lifeguards.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes.
And the cost of getting one, sort of, you know.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's gone.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, the price and the hours and training. We used to be able to do all that with our own kids right here, but.
Things easy, easy.
No, it is not. Anything else for pool? Department seventy-three, skating rink. Not a tremendous increase. I can.
Yeah, decrease.
Live with that. Well, actually, it's a minus, so.
Right, yeah, minus seven.
Certainly live with that. All right. And we will probably run over this quickly again with the full board, but this should save us a few minutes.
What's the increase if you, if you pass all that, what's the increase would be?
Well, we, we've still got departments to go. I don't know. We usually wait till the end, John. But it's, it's, will certainly be up from last year.
How much you think the taxpayers can afford?
My budget went up at home, John, didn't yours?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. What, what do you expect ours to do?
Well, how much can you, a taxpayer afford? That's what I'm saying. You're having issues with.
Well, we're going to find out.
Taxes, you have issues with water, sewer.
Yeah, we're going to find out.
Can you, how much can a taxpayer console? That's what I'm saying.
I, I don't know, John. We're going to find out, you know, if the budget gets passed or not.
The more you keep bleeding taxpayers.
I'm not bleeding anybody, John.
Unless they can.
The price of diesel fuel is up, the price of groceries is up, our insurance has gone way up.
Yes.
I'm in business, I know, but I.
Well, then what are you talking about?
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm asking how much can the taxpayer console? That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's.
When I said it was that last year.
Yeah, probably, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it went up seven percent again. Wouldn't surprise me a bit.
Yeah.
But outside the town meeting, they decide that, John.
Yeah.
If they feel that they reached their limit, they.
But you understand.
Reflect it in their vote. Pardon?
I think you understand what you're saying. You're on a fixed income.
Yes, I.
We don't, we understand what you're saying.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we have anything to our old business. The Burgess House sold.
Yes.
Good, it's back on the.
Yeah.
Taxes, payroll. What did that sell for?
Um, I'd have to double check, but it was what we, what we paid for, when we got through the tax sale.
The sale and everything.
Yeah, and all the fees and stuff attached to it.
Yeah, would you mind emailing me that, please? Thank you. Good, good, good. Um, was there any condition put in there? They had to repair the house down within a certain amount of time?
I don't believe there's any conditions, but they already had a plan for it to take it down and.
Oh, there was not, nothing in writing?
I, it was just, it was not through the attorney and it was just a sale. It was.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think, I think they're, they're going to, from what the sounds bet, they're taking a lot down and clearing out the trees and, you know.
I, I'm working there, yes. Yeah, well, I hope they follow through.
Yes, the thought is they're building a garage there.
I, he likes his cars.
That's what he wants to do, yeah.
Hey, we'll take it.
Yeah.
Anything else, gentlemen? Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting over. Thank you.